Isn't he out of business?
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting at the Falmouth Public Schools for March 3rd, 2020. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I remind everyone that this meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and then I will inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Public comment. Please limit comments to two minutes per individual to items not on this meeting agenda. There will be no debate or no action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual may request an item to be placed on a future agenda. Any public comments? One more time. Are there any public comments? Okay. Act on 2019, 2020 French trip scheduled for April 11th through 24th, 2020, and any reimbursements if necessary.
I make a motion to act on this French field trip.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion, comments? Clarification on, so the motion's on to discuss whether to cancel and then whether or not reimbursements is there? How are you defining?
Yeah, that was my question.
You know, that sort of thing.
I'm not sure I understand the motion. I just want to make sure that...
So you previously approved the French students to travel because of the guidance that has been given to us. The consideration whether the trip should take place or not is coming forth tonight. And then there has been, the funds have been, or will be, which is why we're having a special meeting. We are within our timeframe that we can get everything reimbursed up to $100 per student. So that would be, there's 25 attending, so that would be $2,500. And just in consideration whether, if you do choose to cancel, would you also approve for the reimbursement of that $2,500, $100 per student? So that's, it can be two separate, it could be together, you know what I'm saying? But I mean, some, at least a discussion about those two items.
I'd suggest that we do it as two separate to just cancel and then whether or not on the, any reimbursement discussion. Okay.
Terry, we're gonna...
Would it be appropriate to ask for input from the parties involved?
Yes, it would be appropriate.
Sue?
Sorry to put you on the spot, but...
Okay. In terms of input, I've been anguishing about this for a while. And when we came back from the vacation and everything had, the February vacation and everything had erupted with the coronavirus and the issues, I said, you know, I haven't paid more than, well, I may have paid things, but that's another issue. Just things that we have to reimburse from the French because I paid for things for them with the understanding that they were paying for things for us. But all that the airlines has at this particular moment is an encumbered amount for the 28 tickets, $100 per ticket. What I can do at this point is before my deadline, which is March 11th, so thank you for meeting early, I can cancel three tickets and then that way, you know, they said I could do that and it would be just the $2,500 that I would owe American Airlines. You know, the kids, it's the most wonderful group of kids, which you know, because you know our kids here in Falmouth. You know, when they met their French in the fall, the French kids that were here, you know, that they were partnered with, they bonded so incredibly quickly that, you know, last week, one of the kids said, "Is that coronavirus gonna have any effect?" And I had to tell them that, yes, I had asked you all to consider because it is a big, it's a big risk and now it's seeming even larger with, you know, the different people who have been quarantined from trips that happened during February. So, yeah, I'm still, I want it to happen for them, but I also know it's too great of a risk.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other comments? No, just a comment to thank you, Sue, for all that you did to put it together. I know it's a horrible situation, but it's not lost on any of us, all the effort that goes into it ahead of time and during the trip, of course.
The one consolation for the kids, and I'm gonna keep reinforcing this for them, is they have a friend in France. When it's safe, they can go. Yeah, they'll be welcome with open arms, I'm sure.
Is there any chance that, I don't know how many of them are seniors and might have not have the...
Yeah, 15 are seniors and 10 are juniors.
So 10 might have the chance to go next year?
That would be the next, you know, the next consideration at some point. I want to see what the families are feeling. Two students have withdrawn, no matter what, you know, you decide to make. Just some are personal situations, some, you know, it's fear of, you know, the unknown, which is what I'm dealing with. I mean, to be very honest, my husband works in an assisted living facility and if I were to come home and perhaps have to be quarantined or have the coronavirus or anything else, you know, it could be devastating for the community where he is. So it's, you know, I have very long faces at school because I had to be very honest with them. Dr. Durkman spoke to me yesterday in the middle of French Four Honors class that has 10 travelers in it. So, you know, the kids are prepared, but they're gonna need some time to grieve, too.
So also, is, I don't know when their school year ends, is there a possibility that we could squeeze it in like in June if things turn or no?
No.
I'm just trying to think about...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Technically, their school year ends, in France, they always end like the first, or they begin the first Monday of September and they end June 30th. But the, because it's a lice, the students are taking the bac, which is their big exam at the end of the year for seniors. But they closed down the whole school. So basically, the juniors, who were the kids that we had as partners, they take their bac de français, which is like a little bit bigger than taking an English MCAS, but the same sort of an idea. And then the seniors start their rounds of tests. And so basically by about June 12th, the lice is done. So if we were to go and try to observe at a school at that point, it would be a junior high school, which isn't what, you know, isn't what we would want. And just in terms of reservations and that kind of thing that have, you know, have been made, all of that, whether we could get a spot, you know, in a youth hostel or the international residence that we were going to do in Paris, let alone how much more expensive the tickets are when you go in June versus April. And April's already more expensive than February, you know, that kind of thing. So my thought would be if students are wanting to continue and try, those students next year that we were partnered with would be seniors. So perhaps if we tried February, by which point I'm hopeful that there would be a vaccine for COVID-19, you know, that's maybe been tried out on some other people before we were guinea pigs. But, you know, that could be a possibility depending on what my French team that's in place says with that. It may be just time to call it and figure out what else to do for future or not. Yeah, I've been running that emotional gamut, so I'm not willing to make a total decision yet. Yeah, I had even started researching, could I get the kids to Quebec? You know, in April on a bus, not going through an airport, you know? That it would just be us, but I just don't think there's enough lead time at this point to try something like that. And as Dr. Durk and I were talking about it yesterday, honestly, going through any airport for any trip, I think is gonna be really dangerous just until we know what this disease does because the kids are saying, "But by April, it's gonna be warm and it's gonna be dead." And it's like, can you tell that to all the people in the hot countries that have died from this? That that's really what's happening? You know, how do you know? And then one of my students said, "Well, make sure you tell them that, you know, in Washington State, it's okay because, you know, there wasn't some cross-contamination." Like, I don't even know what you're talking about. Communicate that, but, you know, Kaylee might be happy that I've at least told you something about what she wanted me to say.
Yeah, and even in the short or long term, concern with France and anywhere in the United, or in the world, the closures of schools?
Yeah.
The travel with planes and things, not then traveling to certain countries?
Yeah.
So I think we're just right now at the tip of the iceberg, to be honest with you.
I, yeah, I agree. I mean, my mother was a nurse. Today would have been her 87th birthday. So, you know, just knowing how that infectious stuff works. Yeah, I've been working with this exchange long enough. We went through H1N1. The French government said no student travel to anywhere in North America that year. And I said, well, you know, I had some seniors involved in that exchange from Sandwich where I taught before. And, you know, we talked about it and they said, "Well, madam, let's go." We figured out what to do because we traveled sight unseen. And that was the year of the volcano over Iceland. And we were delayed by four days. We were supposed to fly out on a Sunday and we got there, we were able to fly out Thursday. So we missed all of our booked time in Paris. But, you know, the bus took us on a tour, you know, we got to drive by a few things, which, you know, and I kept telling the kids, "You can't make the family connection without this program, but you can go to Paris anytime and I won't be running behind you saying, 'No, you can't stop in that café and buy that assange right now. We have to be at the Louvre." It's like, "The Louvre closed." It's been closed the last few days. You know, that sort of thing. And a couple of those kids who did the trip, and they were all heartbroken not to see Paris and all those monuments the same way that we had planned because that's what they learned. At least two of them that I'm still in contact with, I mean, it was a life-changing event for them just finding out more about the world once you get over that bridge. And they still prefer Lyon to Paris. Yeah, because that was where that emotional connection is. And so I feel like the kids have that emotional connection already and it's just waiting till there's a safe time to go. You know, some of them were talking today in my AP French class about, "Well, you know, when we're in college, we get a long break in the winter, so maybe we can go and visit them." And I said, "Celebrate, you know, Christmas, go to France for the New Year, you know, and, you know, have that time with them before you have to be back in school." And because, again, these kids, if they go, you know, this first year of their college experience, those kids will still be in high school. So if they want to go in and visit some classes, I'm sure the lice en pair will let them. So, but it's just, you know, it's like, I had a planning meeting with the kids on Friday during Clipper time because I said, "We're gonna just, you know, go forward, getting you ready as we can. You know, we have to face the unknown, which is tonight." So, but, you know, they're resilient. They'll, they'll be okay.
Any other questions? Just on the, so the way it was purchased is it's not with like a travel block that the airfare is part of it? Or was this, that's a separate component with the airfare? The reason I'm asking, because I'm thinking if we lump in that it was like $3,000 and this, if it is a company that was, normally would have got like $40,000 to $60,000, maybe we could leverage that a little more to say for future trips if you're able to give that $100 as well? Or is it just those are booked and directly with the airfare, it's not part of a group travel thing?
Well, it's a group travel that I've booked as a group of, you know, we had three teachers, myself, Chris Brothers, and Laurie Enson to chaperone the 25 kids. So it was a group block. At this point, you know, I mean, the airlines with a group travel like that is much better probably than any of you who had individual trips that you might need to cancel. You know, they've encumbered the $2,800, but they haven't, you know, it's not visible in my account, but it's, you know, so it's there for them if I don't follow through or whatever. But I spent a long time talking with the airlines last week and my husband said he heard American, which is our airline, is maybe doing some travel vouchers. But I said, "Since I haven't paid for the whole thing, I don't know that I want to get involved in that because I don't want to lose money, you know, with what we've got." You know, the way we've worked this exchange over the years with my school in France is some of the bills that come in, I pay for them. Their bus transportation, they flew into New York and out of New York. So I paid for both of those buses. I paid for the buses that we, they did field trips. We went, as a whole group, we went to the National Seashore in, well, in Chatham on Columbus Day when we were out of school. They had a bus to Boston. I paid for, you know, a few reservations for them, for things that they couldn't get booked from France for themselves as they were doing then reservations for me. So that's why I'm saying I don't have quite all of the money because we would have to equilibrate whatever, you know, because there may be some funds that we can't totally recoup from the down payment on the hotel, some train tickets, that kind of thing. I actually wrote to the SNCF today to say, "I bought tickets for us for a trip to Grenoble that would have been on the 16th." And I said, "I know, I realize that when I bought this, it's a non-refundable ticket, but would you have any considerations based on the coronavirus if my school is telling me we're not allowed to go?" So, you know, I got that little form letter back that I'm sure Terry would understand. You know, they'll look at it as quickly as they can and get back to me, so.
So do you think that, so you said there's a potential there for vouchers then, so?
Or to at least get, you know, to perhaps get something back. You know, so we'll, we'll see. At this point, you know, I'm a little bit short beyond, you know, whatever you might be willing to reimburse. I'm a little bit short to totally pay back everybody at this point because, you know, I've paid about $6,000 worth of things for them.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
Would it be appropriate to revisit the reimbursement whenever we have a more concrete, reasonable figure? I mean, can we vote on the spirit of it versus, and then hold off on a national dollar amount tonight? Would that be possible? Sure, I could amend it like that.
Yeah, so you could leave it open-ended to whatever. Or you could do a top dollar amount or up to an amount. Or you could do this and I could come back to you on others if you want to consider. We know the $2,500. So I guess I'm saying I could come back to you with a, you know, if, once we know what the others are, if you wanted to consider more, so you could leave that.
Because like, my concern is not ju, $100 to each family is certainly, I mean, it's $100, you know? But I wouldn't want to do that at the expense of Sue putting out $6,000 that's not being reimbursed. Because my understanding is that it's money that you have spent, not the district has spent.
Well, no, it's the French exchange account.
There's an account.
Oh, there's an account, okay, okay.
It's on Sue.
I got very worried.
I would not let that happen.
Right.
That was my concern.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you. I wouldn't put it past you to be so generous. Just making sure.
No, but you know how much I make. Can't quite swing that.
Financial pressure on you.
On my own, yeah.
John, the only challenge of having it both together is if, if someone is inclined to vote to cancel the trip but not give a reimbursement, then if it's phrased like this, then they're basically voting to keep the trip, you know, and to happen. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think they have to be broken up. I think, we're not, I don't think we're gonna vote them together.
No.
Right? We're gonna break them apart, yeah. Can I have one more question?
Please.
So, you know, I have, my level of knowledge about this is just based on what I read in the news, but I'm sure that you are getting way more information. So, you know, and I think that the public deserves to hear what we're basing this on, not just what I've read in the newspaper.
So a lot of them, it's what's coming across, but of course, from the Massachusetts Department of Health at the federal CDC, we've, we are now having regular meetings here in town with the town manager, both chiefs, Department of Health. We just set in on a statewide call and they're gonna have regular calls now. So we're gonna be meeting on a regular basis. So just, I think that the point of the coronavirus is they don't know everything yet and it's just daily information that's coming through. So a lot of the call was basically on, you know, how to, you know, what we know is now, how to be safe. There wasn't any guidance at that point, as of yesterday, when we had the call of guiding districts on not to take trips or to take, you know, that it's okay or not okay, to continue to check in with the CDC on the no-fly countries as of, which countries if you're coming back from on the quarantine. As of yesterday, it was still only China, you know, quarantined, so they didn't have the others, you know, on the list. So it's, I think it's fluid because I think that's already changed for today. And so, and that's what we're trying to stay on top of on a daily basis. So there's no guidance to school districts at this point on the travel except for the article that came out today that the US was recommending no travel abroad. So that's all we've seen at this time. But I will tell you, I, you know, I don't like to disappoint students and I know it's very disappointing to them, but I do think it's a risk. I, not only for the students, but I also want to look out for the staff that's going and I need to consider, I need to consider everyone. And I, I just don't know at this point that it's worth the risk to do that. We, if there were any kind of situations that they were quarantined, we're asking, you know, three staff members to be in a foreign country for an additional 14 days, you know, at that point, it becomes a financial concern. I'm not sure how we would, you know, cover that cost. Plus just being able to, you know, just the logistics of dealing with that. And I just don't know that it's fair to put that on our staff members. And as disappointed as our students are, I just, you know, everything that we are reading and the considerations and daily getting, you know, more and more information and the trip is still weeks away, right? I mean, it's just, there's still so much gonna happen. And I think it's the right time to make the decision so that we don't lose the funding with the airlines. We can always talk about other funding down the road as we know that, but right now, that's what we know. And I think that's why I ask, you know, for us to be considering that tonight and not even waiting till next week, which would have been, you know, too late at that point.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I speak?
Please. At this point in time with the necessity of all this, yes, you may.
My name is Debbie DePonte and my daughter has been a student of Madonna's for four years. It is a family within Falmouth High School, of which I'm very fortunate that let us have nine friends. I would worry about Madonna. I feel like it's not fair to her. And as much as I don't want my daughter to go the world's worst way, I feel like it's not fair to the teachers. It's a lot of responsibility. And if something was to go terribly wrong, it would not be fair to you.
Thank you, thank you, Sharon, I appreciate that. Any other? Anyone else want to speak? Please.
Hi, my name is Barbie. Nathan Schubert is going to France, is supposed to go to France also. My only concern is that France and Italy made a mistake two weeks ago by letting this soccer game happening in Lyon. We're going, the kids are gonna go to Lyon and 3,000 Italian supporters came to France and they didn't cancel the game. And it was two weeks ago, the game happened, and my son wants to see a game in Lyon and everybody else wants to just browse in Lyon, it's a beautiful city. And I think that's a big mistake. Italy took that seriously too late compared to France and other countries. So that's another concern for the city of Lyon especially.
Yeah. It was a game from... Yes, during, near Lyon, next to the area that has been the most affected. And I also heard on the news this morning, there is somebody who went to a trip to Italy in Massachusetts that worked for a school. They went to a trip to Italy and she might have the virus. So it's a case here. She went to a trip to Italy with a school. I don't know which school, but she's in her mid-20s.
Kid from Rhode Island, so?
They also have a high school in Rhode Island that went to France, Spain, and Italy and now they've come back and they have at least three coronavirus cases now, so.
That school's closed now?
Yeah, and they're, you know, they're quarantined. My concern is that, I'm not an alarmist by nature, but there's just so many unknowns with this that I just think the risk isn't worth it, unfortunately for the students.
Yes. And what is in best interest in the educational world with students?
I appreciate your thoughtful thoughts. Thank you for...
Melissa?
So just a, just a couple observations from, probably the one that's, it affects a lot. Like, I work at Cape Cod Hospital. That is not, that is not an endorsement, it's just where I work. Not that I wouldn't endorse it, I don't, just, you know, whatever. I had the pleasure of going to a procedure today with a pulmonologist and of course I picked his brain, why wouldn't I? And he basically said, he said a lot, but basically what you have all expressed, you know, the, the safety concern, it's not safe for kids. I think, Ms. Schmidt, excuse me, Madonna, I didn't take that.
That's fine.
I think that you bring up a good point when you say that your husband works at assisted living. Through this entire process, of course, the students and the staff are my first concern. But I'm also extraordinarily concerned about the public health portion of it. And you could bring it back and just think you have a sniffle and you're fine. But when you go and visit Nana at the assisted living or when you, you know, you know, send your husband off with lunch to work or, you know, I see somebody and then now I, I just, I feel like it's a, you're asking, you're opening a door to trouble. And it's not lost on me, the disappointment in the kids and the parents and how much work it takes to get them there, I understand. But I just, I think public health and what's safe for our students and staff is really what's most important. And I also think, you also bring up a good point, that they have a friend there, they bonded with somebody. That friendship isn't gonna go away, especially in the day and age, it's not like they're pen pals. You know, they can talk to them right now.
Yeah, well, I think they were... Yeah, well, I think they were during my class.
Yes.
They're still on vacation in France typically because they do two wings each time.
Perhaps maybe this is even more of a bonding kind of thing and like, you know, maybe they get special, you know, time or instead of having class now, maybe they can go summer or I don't know, whatever. I I know that this will work out for hopefully all of the students. I'm so sorry, but I just have to think of the public health.
FaceTime can be a remark.
Yeah. Well, they they stalked the kids the whole way up. They knew where they were. When I I kept trying to get in touch with the teachers that where are you as they were coming up from New York? It was that pouring rain that we had back in October when they were arriving. And the kids said, oh, yeah, they're in such and such a place. They were on SnapApp. Okay, I guess I should get Snapchat for that. I can stalk them and see where they are. But, you know, they 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 may not like it, but they will eventually understand.
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion. We do have a second on the floor.
Could I amend that?
That's what I was getting to. I was working on that.
Thank you, Terry.
If we want to do an amendment, then Terry.
I would, the amendment would be to break those two sentences in half, those two clauses in half. Okay, so one would be to vote on canceling the trip and the other would be to make reimbursements.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have to do the first, yeah, exactly. Do the first one. So the first one would be to.
Vote on the trip.
Vote on the 2019, 2020 French trip. Schedule for April 11th to 24th, 2020, and we will vote to cancel that. Okay? Any questions on that? Any discussion over that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second part on the reimbursement.
I'm going to second that, too. So I think we need to know what it is, though.
Yeah, yeah, we need to.
Do we want to put a hold on this? And again, financially, if we put a hold on this, is this okay with you?
Can I just say? Yeah, I mean, I would I would ask because we, you know, don't have money to cover that or the French exchange doesn't have the money to cover, that could we at least do the first portion that we do know of, that it's a solid number of 2,500 because it's 100 per per student? If we could vote on that, I mean, then I could bring back, I'd ask you to consider that so that we lift that burden from them at this point.
I'm A. Okay with that. I think that's my reason. Yeah, I just would like it to come back to us later with the final numbers.
Absolutely. And I'll work with Susan and we'll we'll figure that out and I'll present it a more itemized of everything else. We just don't know.
It'll take me some time to figure out what they can get back and.
Don't want to hold up what we know.
If you're considering. Well, I mean, it there's two expenses, you know, there's the part that has already been spent, but families are planning on this. I'm sure they've gotten passports and they've got travel stuff. Like, it's not like this is the only expense they've incurred. So this is just a small piece of what they're already spending.
Absolutely.
So it seems, and this is totally out of anyone's control, it seems only fair to take what we can.
The motion would be, go ahead, John. Is it a we in discussion phase on that?
I don't even know if we have.
Yeah, we don't have the second motion yet.
Oh, no, second. I got you.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion that we reimburse $2,500 to the French exchange account to cover expenses. I'm still going to say. Okay.
John, my only, of course, now, to my understanding, it was what the total amount per kid was like $2,000?
That what I, well, the.
If it did happen.
Final that I was asking for to make sure that we could eat in Paris would have brought everyone to 1,600. So it was $400 less than my guesstimate.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah, not everyone has paid all of that. I have three checks that I got last week that I just held on to saying, I'm not going to put it in the account to then turn around. Anyway, I would just hand that back to the the families with, you know, as much as I can reimburse at this point. And then also deciding, figuring out, should I reimburse the juniors who might be able to go if we can work something out for next year or, you know, just and then get the money back to France, which is sometimes the bigger issue. I had paid the last exchange before this one that we did here, I had paid for their hotel bill and it took them a year to get me reimbursed. So that's the biggest issue there. You know, American Airlines was extremely helpful. So if, you know, if I call them tomorrow and I say, I want to reduce by three to bring down that number, you know, they might say, well, you know, we can actually do it and not remember any money. I would let you know right away. You know, if they say that, but I can't, you know, they said unless there is a travel ban to that country, then, you know, it's their protection. And they, yeah, it could be, I mean, I could wait until the 11th and say, okay, well, you know, reduce by three and then cancel and see what happens between now and then.
John, my reason for asking that was just to get an idea of the scope of of the financial situations of the kids that they had, you know, that they're getting 1,500 of 1,600 back. And as as unpopular as this may come across, as because $100 is important, even if someone can come up with 1,600, it's $100, $100. But with all the challenges that we have in the district with homeless kids and kids that don't even have a jacket to 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 give $2,500, you know, to offset when the kids were able to have 1,600 towards that, I just think that it's a precedent also for other situations that we just would have to think of if a future situation or if I don't even know if some kid in the past had some serious family issue, that they might come to us and say, geez, I, you know, I had this horrible family thing happen. I didn't know I could get reimbursed for that, the $100 that I had three years. I don't even know. But just from a precedent standpoint, but I think this would be, so I'd be inclined to vote no for the reimbursement. But I would say that this would be a great time to utilize, I know we voted to lower the parking fee that was $80 a year for the kids and a couple hundred dollars of kids, a couple hundred kids paying $80. So we have tens, if not over $100,000 in that account for the parking. This would be a great opportunity to go into that fund, which is not defined to allocate it, and help mitigate that $2,500. That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, Patrick needs to speak.
So just to be clear, that that parking fee, there's there may be $12,000 in that. So what where we we have talked with the auditor about this and he signed off on any reimbursement. My choice, if you voted on this, would be to not take this out of the local budget. There's something called an insurance recovery fund that the school district has. So pipes break, we we put in, we put in notice to the insurance company. They sometimes give us money back. We try try to get stuff done inexpensively, so there's a little bit of money in that insurance recovery fund. That's where I would take the $2,500 from.
John, just to follow on that, that wouldn't affect any kind of deductible or anything on the insurance?
No, no.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we have the motion to vote on a reimbursement of $2,500. I'll just say to the French club that good enough on that?
The Fama Flea Home Exchange.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to actually suicide because that insurance thing was is a change is a game changer. Thanks, Peter. And the vote passes for the reimbursement of $2,500.
Please come to us when you have the final number.
Yes.
And when you're ready to take it on and do it again, plan a whole nother trip. It's going to be a while.
Yes, it is.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry. It just stinks.
I will, I will. Yeah, I have to, you know, I've got so many emotions right now. Can't even decide, but hopefully you'll still support us if we can get them there next year.
Of course. Awesome trip.
Stop that.
Any other questions on that part? Okay, before we adjourn, I'll leave you with a quote. Quote, "Even on the most exalted throne in the world, we are only sitting on our bottom." It's by anonymous. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Melissa wants a second.
Opposed?
Oh. Man, I feel like our last meeting was super happy and this one is such a.